Everyone, I'd like to welcome everyone to the town of Pownell Select Board Meeting, regular board meeting. July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Board member rule call.
Angie Rowling.
Jamie Percy.
Bob Jarvis.
Brian Harris.
Mike Gardner. I'd like everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Tara.
Oh, my. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the states of the country. And to the republic which is ours, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That probably means you're up next now.
It should be more than that.
I know, now she won't show up to that meeting, sorry. Approval of the agenda, public comment, approval of the minutes of June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, emergency select board meeting. Warrants, correspondence, excess weight permits, executive for contractual, tax rate discussion and approval. Town acquired unlanded trailer discussion. Executive for contractual, reports and updates from town officials, amendment to the personnel policy, schoolhouse meetings based discussion. Executive for contractual, executive for legal, public comment and adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
With the change.
Any additions? We remove the constable question for clarification on fees. I'm sorry, I should have said that when we were reading the agenda. I apologize. Thank you, Jamie. Anything else? Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Any public comment, you know?
Nobody has an agenda.
I have a couple of things that I'd like to bring up under the first public comment. One, is, everyone knows with the flooding and the torrential rain and everything that we had going on. Tuesday, right? Was it Tuesday? Whatever day this week. I want everybody to know that our emergency management coordinator emailed, you were in on the emails, Tara was in on the email. Six-thirty in the morning, Craig notified me that he might not be available all day long, had a second in command. Set up for what was going on. I believe the road crew was involved. I just think that, that the preparedness that we had, and thank God, we didn't have to use them like everyone else did. But the preparedness for, for the town, we were in pretty good shape. We monitored the river a couple of times during the day, the heights of the river, I know it's all went down. You know, we talked about it. I know Craig actually asked them to lower the, that's, of course, I'm sorry. The other thing, asked them to lower the dam at hydro plant, and it did, they did, and it dropped the river approximately three feet pretty quickly. Pretty quick, so just wanted to let you guys know out there that, that I think we're in pretty good hands all the way around, that we, we were on top of a potential bad situation. The other thing that, that, and we'll post this, is Julie sent me, came to the health officer today. Anybody that did experience any flooding in town, there are free drinking water test kits available through the state. There's a phone number that we'll post on the town website afterwards. I can actually, I'll forward you this email. I don't, I don't think you got it. I'll forward Tara this email. So if your well or spring was flooded, or, or, you know, we got a lot more rain coming. If it does give, become flooded, these free test kits from, from the state will be available. And there's, there's an email, so you can contact the town, the town office, or email us or whatever, and, and there'll be a phone number here, we'll, we'll provide for you as well. And that's about it. Thank you. Approval of minutes, June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, discussions? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, emergency select board meeting, which was the approval of the sheriff's contract.
So moved.
June twenty-ninth, correct?
Yes.
Know what I said?
I think you said the twenty-third.
Sorry, June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Yep, nope.
Verificating.
Nope, that's fine, thanks, thanks, Jamie.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob abstain.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Warrants, accounts payable, June thirtieth, sixty thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, corrections? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Accounts payable, July seventh, two thousand twenty-three, fifty thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Corrections, questions? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Accounts payable, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, fifty-nine thousand three hundred and ten dollars and sixty-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, corrections? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Payroll, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, twelve thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-one cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike abstain. Payroll, July seventh, two thousand twenty-three, eleven thousand seven thirty-six ninety.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, questions? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike abstain. Payroll, July fourteenth, eleven thousand three forty-seven ninety-five.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, corrections? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Any correspondence?
Just one from Julie. Pownell Beer and Wine Corp is seeking their tobacco substitute endorsement.
Who?
Pownell Beer and Wine Corp, it's wires.
Yeah, the new.
Oh, that, their new name?
That's a new name, okay.
So moved.
Second.
Well, any questions, any more questions on that? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye.
That was just for the liquor, right? Now you have to do for the tobacco? No, we did the liquor and tobacco before, this was just for the substitute.
Okay.
Do we have any excess weight permits?
No.
Okay. Executive for contractual, and this one is the rescue squad.
So moved.
Discussing the rescue squad.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye.
Amount of executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Tax rate discussion and approval.
Sent this to all of you, and Ellen's here also.
Hi, Ellen.
Hi, Ellen.
So, the front page is the information you need to set the tax rate. And then on page three, it tells comparison from last year on the bottom. And they, both the homestead and non-residential rate went down some. Yay.
Excellent.
And all the ballot articles passed, so the rate is set on the full amount of requested ballot articles. Just to let you know that, okay?
Anybody have any questions on this? You know, Tara sent it to us earlier tonight, or actually.
Rate went down, that's what you just said?
The rate went down, both of them, yes. Homestead went down point one zero eight four, and non-resident went down point zero two eight. Where are you? Yes, so that's, that's the actual state rate, but the actual town homestead tax rate went down point one three seven five. And the non-residential actual tax rate went down point oh five seven nine. So this year, the rate for homestead would be one point eight oh seven three, plus the seventy-five for sewer bond, for and then the two, I've lost my train of thought, I'm sorry, and the non-residential tax rate is two point zero eight five two, plus the seventy-five.
So, in layman's terms.
In layman's terms. The tax rate this year for homestead will be one point eight zero seven three, once you set it, and the non-residential rate would be two point zero eight five two.
So, the residential, the homestead rate went down approximately fourteen cents.
Correct.
Just so, because it was a dollar ninety-four last year, a dollar eighty.
Yep, you can.
Thirteen cents, whatever. And then the non-residential rate went down, looks like about six cents. It went from two fourteen to two oh eight, give or take. Because you got a lot of little actual numbers in there.
Yeah, because we always go out four.
I know, I'm kidding. So the tax rate went down.
Yep.
Fairly, fairly significant, actually.
Yep, and that's, a lot of it is because the non-residential and the homestead rate from the state did go down for the school portion of the tax bill.
Perfect. What's your pleasure? Any questions, I guess, for Ellen on this, before we go and vote? The discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the tax rate as stated.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? The only thing I'd like to say is, great work by everybody, our, our, our department heads. Everyone here in the office, penny pinching and busting our chops about spending money and different things, and just, just a good all-around effort by everyone to, to try to bring stuff down, or at least stay level.
Balanced, yeah.
Balanced, yeah, so that's one thing I have for discussion on.
I'll post this on the website.
Awesome. All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Thank you, Ellen. Town acquired, unlanded trailer discussion.
Okay, so I, Ellen handed me off this week.
Thanks, Ellen.
Property that we acquired. I know, sorry. An attack sale. It's located in Pownell Estates, it is occupied. I spoke with Patriot Holdings, the management company, they are not interested in buying it. The current, or the previous owners owe a large sum in lot rent, they will be billed for that. We will be getting a bill for the current owed rent amount. I'm not sure what the lot rent is down there, but she's willing to keep open communication. I think she's pretty fast in responding to me.
Are you talking with Jennifer?
Yeah, so she said they don't want to buy it, and she believes that it should be possibly condemned. That you should probably go take a look at it, and when I drove by, I had the same thought.
So, now that we're the owner, I'll talk about the owner doctor, we just need to notify the tenants that I'll be coming in to do an inspection on the mobile home, so I don't, I, I, have we ever done that, Ellen? I mean, you're the only one that I can ask.
The last mobile home was years ago, and it was landed, and I don't remember if people, this was back when, oh boy, this was at least three years ago. It was over three, remember it was down on Route three forty-six, an eviction.
And then it was in pretty rough shambles, so we.
You fixed it and then sold it. This one, because it's unlanded, once you, and I don't know if the previous owners are actually the people living in there. Because last we heard, they were living in Massachusetts, so it could be their family members or somebody, so we don't know for sure. Names, we'll have to see if Patriot Holdings knows exactly who is in there.
So I think what we need to do probably is reach out to Bob Fisher.
Okay, and get the process.
Get the proper process on this, and then notify the tenants.
An eviction process?
No, let's, let's do the, well, let's find out the process. So I think in order to do the, I think the first order of business, and I may be wrong, this where Bob Fisher, I hope, can guide us. I think the first order of business would be to go in and inspect, do a health inspection, and I can do that. I'll get ahold of Eddie, and we'll go in together and do a health inspection. I think at that point, and I, and I don't know, I haven't researched, so excuse me, that's too much. I think if, if the trailer becomes condemned, I'm not sure of that process. We, the town may become responsible.
As I say, we could have a go to eviction.
I don't believe so. I don't know, though. I don't know.
So that's why we need to reach out to Bob Fisher, that's our first order of business. And let's bring this back to our next regular meeting, which today is, what, the thirteenth? So it'll be the twenty-seventh. And we can go from there, because I don't think we want to drag out this, because we don't want to pay lot rent to Pownell Estates as the town for too long.
That's right.
Have to.
We all owe from the June second date, so we already owe them.
Right, so I think we want to get this going as quick as we can, whether it's condemned or an eviction. At that point, we'll, we can, we'll evict, we'll start that process.
Depending on the actual shape of it. You can recoup any money that we, we could recoup any money that we put into it, if it's saleable. But that would be after the eviction, and then, then we pull it out, then you stop paying lot rent.
Right.
So.
And that's our goal, obviously.
Yeah, and then that's why we did the process that I did send the owners, previous owners, the information for V H A P and everything several times with, with letters, because they have had a delinquent bill too, with everything, and with no response. And I gave them, back when it first happened, I gave them the connection for a lady that used to work at Brock to help fill out the paperwork, because it's timely, and it's, it's not easy. And, well, she doesn't work there now anymore, but V H A P's over, so. But there is another, the W A P or something like that from the state that I also signed up for, that's still going to help with delinquent sewer. So anyway, that's just information to know, that we did give them all option not to have to lose their home.
Right.
So let's reach out to Bob, let's, and then come back the twenty-seventh, and we'll process it that way.
They've been notified, the town owns it now, in a letter form or not?
I don't know what Kevin, I don't know what Kevin does with that. Kevin handles that side.
That's the other thing they need to.
Well, I don't know about the tenants.
I don't think.
Probably haven't been notified.
I don't know who's in there, right, and I, and I don't think you, they will be notified once you get it rolling, that's how they get notified. They know the date was last year, and they know the process. Yep.
Okay. Obviously, they know that they can't go on forever without paying.
What do you think? Maybe they're paying somebody, who knows?
That's true.
We'll do it all the way.
Yep.
No more Hatfields and McCoys there. We can go back to town dump drop, get them out, but that's too many labels. All right, executive for contractual, and what's, what do you have this one set up for?
To discuss a bid.
Okay.
Make a motion to go into executive?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye.
To come out of executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye.
I'd like to make a motion that a person that had a bid on a piece of equipment needs to pay by August thirty-first, or it will go back out to bid. And moving forward, we will be putting a thirty-day on all bids for pieces of equipment or town-owned property to be paid.
Probably actually two separate motions, isn't it?
Oh, you want two separate motions? All right, all right. So I renegate my motion, and I go back to my first motion, that a person that bid on a piece of equipment has until August thirty-first to pay for it, or we will go back out to bid.
And so just to be clear, there was, when that went out to bid, there was no
Date.
Date of payment due on that, so it's just, you know.
It's a policy oversight. We've never had dates to pay by, it's never been an issue, so going forward, we're going to have a thirty-day deadline to pay.
Correct.
Close to fiscal year. Second your motion.
Any more discussion on that? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Now you can go with your second one.
All right, so my second motion is moving forward, on all bids for town-owned property or pieces of equipment will be paid within thirty days.
Of acceptance of bid.
Correct.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion on that?
Should it be, just real quick, should it be upon taking possession, or from the acceptance of the bid?
I think acceptance of the bid, actually.
They have to pay before they can take it.
And I, is that right? Right, I was just going to say that, I think in your motion, I think an amendment should be on that emotion, Angie, that before taking acceptance of the, or taking possession of the
On my first one, or my second one?
Second one.
Payment not to exceed thirty days, or at, or prior to
Possession.
Possession, okay. So moving forward, I make a motion that there is a thirty-day payment on any town bought equipment.
Town-owned.
Or owned, excuse me, town-owned, or piece of equipment within thirty days be paid upon
Prior.
Prior to
Taking possession.
Taking possession. I should have wrote that down.
That was a tougher one.
That was a tough one.
Tara's gonna have to decipher that for the minutes.
Second.
Okay.
Any more discussion on that? I think that's a good policy, Tara, don't you? But, okay, good.
I'll draft it up, and then have you guys.
All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. I'll beat some town officials, I'll be wicked quick, so we can get out of here before the storm hits. Hannah and I wrote zoning violation last Thursday that took effect because we've already sent out, we had already sent out a thirty-day notice. I think we had, what do we have for Monday for our date, do you remember?
Yes, Monday.
Yeah, it was, the zoning violation took effect on Monday, the fine. We also sent a thirty-day notice of violation on Friday as well, which will take effect if it's not corrected thirty days from that notice that we sent out. We worked on those Thursday afternoon. Health officer standpoint, I get a notification that I need to do some inspections on some pieces of property in Pownell Estates. I told that person, there's three separate pieces down there. I told him I needed proof of ownership before I would go in, and I will get Eddie to go in with me. I also told him I want a representative from Pownell Estates, because they are the owner. I have a, I have a proof of ownership from the sheriff's department, letter that they own those three, that they want me to inspect on, I don't remember the lots, but she sent me the, sent me the proof of ownership from the sheriff's department, so I'll move forward with those. But I'm going to take a park representative with me, as well as our town constable, when I, when I go in and do the inspections on those three pieces. I've had some other little minor stuff, health officer-wise. I'll quickly, taken care of, got a lot of ashing. The zoning violation was the big one, and the other letter, and just more things that have been going on. Any questions? Do you have any questions on that?
Thank you.
Can I maybe do the tree under town reports and town officials?
That's where it would go.
We have a tree on our property at the old town hall that orders our neighbor's property over there, Mrs. Shields. It's been dropping dead stuff on the ground, so Greater Heights went over, spoke with her, got permission to remove the tree, because it's, it's right on the line, it is our tree, but in the past, she didn't want to see it taken down. She agreed that it needed to come down, she's allowing access to her driveway and everything, so Greater Heights gave us a quote of twenty-five seventy-five to complete the job.
So the only thing that I'm going to ask is, do we have written permission from Mrs. Shields?
I was thinking the same thing.
But I could draft something tomorrow.
You definitely need that.
Before I'll, I'll reach out to Dave and ask him to wait to start until I get that.
Once we get written permission from Mrs. Shields, then I'm fine with going ahead with it, but I, I wouldn't want to have it in writing.
Okay, I have one hundred.
And that's to take the tree down and remove all the, all the debris?
Yes.
Does that include removal of the stump or grinding it down, or just leaving the tree stump?
I believe it's leaving the tree stump, but I can check with them.
I'm assuming for that price, he's not grinding the stump.
What's, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept the bid.
Contingent on the property owner signing.
Yes.
Something giving permission. I'll second it.
Perfect. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. Amendment to personnel policy.
So this is really short and simple. When I sent the policy out to all of our other staff, someone mentioned the concern of the town office hours are listed as nine to five, so I just wanted to simply put in there. Town office hours vary depending on the schedule of the town clerk and administrative staff. Administrative staffing hours vary depending on meeting schedules. Administrative staff is expected to be present during the hours of nine AM to two thirty PM, and until five PM on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Making an appointment to meet with administrative staff is encouraged. So I'm hoping to just add that into the policy, if you approve it. And I reached out to the L C T today to see if we can just add it, or if I have to do a special process, but if you approve it, I'll do whatever they recommend us.
I think you can just add that.
We'll see what they say. I think that's a
You approve, approve what it says.
I think that's a great addition on there. Times have changed, and I think having the appointments and whatever is a good idea, personally.
Make a motion to accept the amended language, following the L C T's recommendation.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, aye.
Jamie, aye.
Bob, aye.
Brian, aye.
Mike, aye. I'm trying to get you guys out of here before the storms.
I'm pushing, it's too late.
I don't know, I haven't seen any thunder and stuff, so whatever. Schoolhouse meetings based discussion.
So that was basically, you guys had said you wanted to brainstorm ideas for furniture and stuff in there. With that said, we kept the old windows from the schoolhouse, and Angie had a dream of putting photographs in there. So I had asked Bill to sort of help me pull together some photographs, so he started doing that, and they will look similar to like this. And he also wants to do one like, that have, you know, really well-known people, or businesses, and our town. Old pictures, new pictures, and he's condensing them so they fit in the paint of the windows.
A shadow box, but the, the, old windows can be a framework.
Yes.
This is your idea.
That is not what I was thinking of at all.
It's okay, if it's not, you have to.
Yeah, so just speak up.
Yes.
What were you thinking?
Because the window panes, there's six of Cause the window panes, there's six of them.
Yeah.
And they're like this big and I blew up a picture of eight by 10. And hang on, hang on.
I think he was trying to get as many pictures in as possible and not.
But I only wanted to use two windows. I mean, all these pictures would take more than two windows. Do you want all those windows hanging up in there?
I don't know that it is more than two. The panes are, I don't, they're downstairs. And no, I think these were just more examples of what he has. These aren't specifically the ones that we're gonna use. This is just stuff that.
Like he had.
Should come up with ideas kind of thing.
Well, I also think, I also think that, um, so I want to see what you thought, Angie, obviously.
So.
I also think we can make this so it's a, so maybe it's a rotating type of a picture thing too. You know, we change them every year or, or if something happens in town, we can change it or, you know what I mean? Just things like that. I don't know.
A kid art contest.
My idea was.
That would be great, Bob, actually.
Bennington just did that with all the banners they hung up.
See, I was using this window, the old windows. There's only six panes. And I was thinking one of the old schoolhouse different shots. I had those three and I put a thing out there looking for more pictures of the old schoolhouse. And then I wanted to do another one of pictures of it moving and then with it in place.
That's nice idea.
I see what you're doing. Okay. You can show us. Okay. Well, so let me, let me answer your question. Um, I think that's an awesome idea and I wish you'd brought that up, you know, instead of keeping it a secret.
Are those definitely what the windows look like?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I wish you'd brought that up instead of keeping it a big secret.
I did bring it up.
I'm kidding. But I think.
But we can get together with certain people and come up with something.
Yeah, but so, so you could have pictures of the old schoolhouse. You could have pictures of it moving on one window.
Okay, so you want to do three pictures in three pictures?
Well, that's what I'm thinking, right? And then we could come up with another window because we have multiples and we could come up with some really cool things.
Okay.
Of the town and then we could, we could change those pictures out periodically. I think Bob, I, you know what, Mom, you were kind of joking about it, but a, but an art contest with the kids at the school, you know, uh, you know, maybe we say, okay, we're gonna do, we have six, we have, we have seven grades at the school.
Right.
Right? So obviously it would be hard. We, one grade is gonna get kind of, but if there's six panes, at Christmas time, we say, okay, we're looking for Christmas pictures to go into the, to that one window. And each classroom, each grade, each grade gets a pane on the window for their, the, the winner of their, of the artwork. I, it just brainstorming, stealing Bob's idea, you know, or feeding off of, you know.
Well, and in, in full disclosure, uh, it wasn't quite my idea. I went through the Bennington Museum a couple of weeks ago and the kids all had, uh, you know, all the Bennington classes and it was from a, a, around the, uh, around the area too. It was from, from New York, from Pownell, from Bennington, from Chats, from Shastbury, from Arlington. They had, uh, uh, kids' pictures up. It's, it's really pretty cool.
I was just, you know, so just like I said, feeding off your idea that you stole from somebody else. How's that?
Well, it's good community involvement.
I know that I just promised that I would do it.
Yep.
When the historical people are here, we discuss the windows. So I had every intention of doing it.
And if there's.
That's what I said I would do. And anybody knows me, if I say I'm gonna do something, I'm gonna do it.
And if more windows than we want for wall space, then we can offer the extra windows to the historical society to do something similar down in their area.
Or whatever they want.
Rotate. Well, I mean, we, we've got options.
What else do we need to discuss on that?
Um, furniture, basically like the placement of where you want that big screen. And then, um, Bill and I were brainstorming placement of the table so that nobody really has their back to people. So, um, a U shape may work so that like you guys all sit facing the screens and then there's two side tables for anybody joining the meeting such as myself or other guests. Um, and then you're all within zoom, within the screen. But then placement in the room also is a question of where you would want it.
Well, when we were in there, in one meeting that you and I had, that, but that was the middle of the afternoon. The sun was pretty brutal on that southwest corner for what we were trying to do. And the light onto the computer screen that we, when we were, had that Zoom meeting. I, I thought it was pretty brutal to what we were trying to do.
We're gonna have to put like shades on the windows?
Maybe.
Maybe. I just, that was tough.
Sure. But if we put the screen across from the windows, probably definitely.
Right.
But if we put them on that, that wall.
One there.
On that west wall, maybe not.
Yeah.
Cause you know.
I just kind of assumed we'd be sitting with our backs to this wall facing the windows.
But that puts the screen in front of the windows.
I know, and I hadn't thought about like the sun coming through the windows when I was thinking that.
I just, I know, that was in the afternoon too.
By the building, you'd be looking at the back of that screen.
Yeah.
From outside of the building.
That's true.
Hit it that way. But you could also flip it. You guys could have your backs to the windows and that could be facing the window, which is a nice view, but I don't know how much sunlight, how much.
Well, we're not gonna get a lot of sunlight from those north windows.
Yeah, so that's, that might be.
Right.
Doable also.
Right. Those west windows, we're gonna get the, the sun going down.
I think we'll run a lot of extension cords and move stuff around till we figure it out, what works best.
Well, I think we set it up and we done with it.
Well, it's gonna have to be movable because we're gonna be voting in there. So stuff's gonna have to get shuffled around.
Do a U shaped table. It could be three separate tables.
Right.
Right. Then you could use those for the check-in, checkout tables and.
I like the U shape idea because, um, when we're here as a board, uh, you know, at least since I've been sitting here and, you know, us together, our board's a little bit different. We kind of work more as a team. And I think the U gives us more of that team approach. And with, with Tara and Hannah as well. And then when we bring in outside people to come in, um, having that separation isn't a bad thing either, but our, our team that we have here, I think in that U shape gives it, gives it a much better team feel.
I didn't think about this when we were, for like initially doing it, but if it's in a U shape and they're all sitting the same way, when they're having discussions, that might be kind of hard if you, they're all.
Yeah, cause they're all, it's kind of like a town meeting how you're sitting. That's not very comfortable for a discussion.
That way, because if you're at one end, it mics at the other and you guys are.
Yeah.
And never thought about that when we talked about it.
I didn't either. But I don't know what's better, that or, or.
Yeah, or your back, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, I mean, basically we're in a, a U and someone, you know, Bob was here, either or.
Right. So like if, if there weren't a lot of people from public, they could just take the side of chairs.
Yeah.
Right.
That would work, yeah. And then when the people were like, it wouldn't be so awkward when people were in there from the public.
Well, could we?
Conversating with each other.
Right.
So, so let's, I'm sitting here brainstorming, you know, to be honest, I didn't brainstorm this too much like I should have. Um.
So my question is, I thought we decided that we were gonna go in the other room and leave this table out here so we could have two meetings at the same time if we wanted to. So does that mean that we're gonna have to get another Zoom?
Oh, I, I didn't, I didn't know the part about having two meetings at the same time.
We didn't know how like there's D R B or whatever.
There are times like Parks and Rec tends to overlap with planning commission.
Right. And I thought that was the point of having the two.
Well, so where I was suggesting was gonna be, okay, let's, let's lock on to where we think the screen should go.
Right.
And then take this table for now, move it into that room, play with what we think. Right? And then make a decision from there after we, before we spend any money on something that we're not happy with at the end of the day.
I actually have three fold-out tables I can use.
That, that we can try. I'm sure we can leave this in here. So, so I, I, you know, we'll, we'll take the screen. We, we say, okay, this is where we kind of want the screen.
Yeah.
A Zoom screen. We bring here three tables and we try the U shape. U shape doesn't work, we go back to this table or similar.
Figure out, yeah.
You know, rather before we spend any money, we try something, a couple of different things.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
Is that right? So I think we need to come up with a screen. I think we need to come up with a screen location. And in order to come up with a screen location, I think we need to figure out the, the lighting at the select board meeting times because they're very consistent with D R B, planning commission and other stuff. So I think, you know, so there's very few daytime business hour meetings like we had where the sun was brutal and it was just where we ended up in the room. So I think it's, I think we, we hinge our decision on the, on the screen on the six o'clock-ish meeting time. Winter time, obviously not a big deal, but you know, the summertime. So I think we, we kind of check that out a couple nights at six o'clock or whatever and see what the lighting looks like. Okay?
And do you want to try with a temporary setup for the next meeting in there?
I'd love to.
Okay. And for, for P H S, do we want to stay here for the special town historical meeting in here or in there?
Do you think we're gonna have a lot of publics? Cause if we're gonna have a lot, we should try to set up.
Well, if we could try to set up in there, I think it would be really cool to have a historical society meeting on the 20th in the schoolhouse.
Right. Cause we should start like Monday, moving the screen and.
I just think, I just think that would be really cool.
Okay.
To, to try to have that meeting in that, in this school.
Wait until later on after 12, I could help.
Okay.
I don't know how much help I could be, but I could help.
Yeah, you're not much.
Probably not. I'm pretty weak.
Are you good on that?
Sounds good to me.
Perfect. Executive for contractual.
And that is our CAT TV.
Okay. So it's our CAT TV contract?
Yep.
I know I saw those executives and it's like, I don't even know any of them before, so I'm good with that.
I make a motion to go in executive.
With possible action. All, all those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I.
Boarding in progress.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. Oh, there's no action to be taking at this time. Um, entering the executive for legal.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I.
Executive session.
Waiting.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. And there'll be no action taken at this time. Uh, public comment.
Uh, no hands are up.
No hands are up.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Angie, I.
Jamie, I.
Bob, I.
Brian, I.
Mike, I. And, uh, stay safe everyone.
Yes.
Um, and if you see a problem, reach out to, to the road crew or whoever and, um, in the next few days, we're probably in for some serious weather. Thank you everyone. Have a good night.